Alrighty, it's uh six o'clock somewhere, so we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. First order of business this evening is the public meeting. And thank all you for coming and participating. So Madam Clerk, do we have, I'm sure we do, have folks signed up for the open forum?
Um, I formally had two people sign up, but if anyone else that's joined in the room, they can come up as well. But I think we'll let Taylor go through her presentation first and then we'll take questions after, if that's okay?
Absolutely. Taylor, welcome.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank the members of the public who came out to join tonight for around three of the budget. Okay, so, um, yes, sorry, I'll try and speak louder, I know that's.
Please.
Yes, sorry. Okay, so just for your knowledge, you'll see red highlighting throughout the presentation. So for the previous drafts, I changed, as we made changes from draft one, everything that changed from draft two and then draft three, I highlighted in red, just so we could have the distinction for what came in and what came out and clear for both staff and council and then also members of the public as well. So that's just what we'll be going through tonight. So here we are, March nineteenth, the third round of the budget and public meeting. And then we're hoping to adopt the budget at the next meeting, April second, or April third, rather, sorry. Okay, sorry in advance for all of the detail on some of these slides, I know it's hard to read. I'll try to get through it as best I can and then if you have any questions or can't see it, I can enunciate more or whatever we need to get through, so you guys have the information. So we left off at draft two at eight point five eight percent. I expected to come in today around six percent. We see the rate of draft three at the bottom of this chart at three point two three. There are two key factors in this. We left that meeting with a direction from council to go towards the wages and org review changes that Kayla had proposed. So that was taken out, which was a one point one six reduction in the rate, so that's a huge reduction there. And then the other one was that previous rounds, we had our growth rate in at two hundred ninety-three thousand. So that is essentially the year-over-year increase in the assessment base, based on supplemental billing for residential taxes. So it was at two hundred ninety-three thousand. We got some information from MPAC for a projection based on twenty twenty-four and what they expect twenty twenty-five to look like. Similar to twenty twenty-four, they expect us to be in a growth pattern as well, much more than I had anticipated. So we have increased that number to six hundred thousand. That led to a one point six reduction in the rate, so that's where you see the major jump and probably unexpected from where we left off in our last meeting. Yeah, just because I've seen a lot of discourse about that rate, so I just wanted to be clear on where, why we have such a lower rate coming into tonight. Okay, so then I'll go to the next slide. So this is essentially the meat and potatoes of our budget and how we land at the three point two three percent. There's been a lot of discourse on how growth impacts our budget and how it's essentially paying for itself or helping in the future. So as you can see, in twenty twenty-four, our budgeted or a total to raise from general taxation was eleven million four hundred thousand eighty-six, uh, four hundred eighty-six thousand. Of that, our growth, we expected four hundred and six thousand. And then the budgeted taxation was eleven point eight nine two million. So I think in future years, I'm going to change how this is laid out, because just the math here does not really, if you're not looking at it as a math equation, it's not going to appear like a math equation. So to a lot of members, this will look like we need to raise eleven point eight nine two million and that our growth is actually being added to our taxation base, where that's not the case. So next year, I'm proposing that we will change how this looks, so that the growth amount there will be a reduction. And then the numbers are flipped, so that it will just look a bit cleaner. So we can also see, so essentially then our seven point six percent rate last year was supposed to bring us in eleven point four eight six million. And ending assessments went up significantly over four hundred and six thousand for the supplemental bills. So we brought in seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty dollars more than what our budget was. So that, that essentially is a good thing. That helps us this year, because that brings our base starting rate at higher than what we anticipated. So that, that is a good thing overall, but this year now in the same thing, our budgeted taxation is the three point three seven six million that we need to bring in to cover all of our expenses for the year, both operating and capital. And our growth rate now is six hundred thousand, so now I need to raise twelve million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand from general taxation. So that's a total increase of five hundred and sixty-one thousand seventy dollars, which leads us to the three point two three blended rate, which is an increase for the county of Gray of three point three percent, an increase for Southgate of three point seven percent, and a nil increase on education. I hope that makes sense to everybody. Okay? Okay, and now this one is very small and I apologize in advance. So this year, we have a significant draw on reserves. So I just wanted to highlight exactly all of the projects that are coming out of reserves this year, especially if council wanted to change any of their directions based on what they see here. Because it's easy to look at a number, but it's probably better to look at the individual items that are coming out and see if we can change anything, move things forward, cancel projects, et cetera. So you can see the items highlighted in red are additions from draft two that we've taken out of reserves now. Of that, fifty thousand dollars is a new compressor for the fire department. There was a five-year agreement or proposed agreement to the Mount Forest Aquatic Reserve, that we would create a reserve for the Mount Forest Aquatic Center at fifty thousand dollars a year. This money is coming from another reserve, so it's kind of a nil, nil impact, but it's still a reduction in the overall reserves. We have a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar sand shed replacement that's coming from reserves. Jim will speak to this, why that number grew from six hundred thousand. And then also a forty-five thousand dollar replacement for the garage door for WRDM. So Jim, if you want to speak to the six.
I'll let John speak to it.
Sure.
So yeah, the extra money was basically we had missed out on the demolition portion of the sand shed replacement. So that's just adding in, it was just over fifty thousand to demo the old sand shed as well.
Great, thank you, John. Yeah, and then I added to the far right column, just the impact on if we did decide to add those, any of those items back into taxation, what those impacts might look like, just as information to council and the public. Okay. And then similar to last year, we have overall budget impacts. These are very, pretty well the same items as last year, just over again. So this year, one percent of the tax rate is equivalent to a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is a significant increase from last year. It was around a hundred and sixty-seven thousand is a one percent increase. So obviously, that change, it, it's hard to, if you take out little projects, it doesn't impact the rate significantly. So we just have to keep in mind that one percent is a pretty big chunk of money to move up or down, just so that everybody is well aware of that. Our insurance costs have gone up significantly this year and last year, nine percent overall going into twenty twenty-five. And then we've just changed the accounting of some of the insurance on how it was done previously. So there are some swings to finance and some swings to admin, but overall, it's just a nine percent blanketed increase for the township. Excuse me. And then ongoing from the twenty twenty-two audit, it was discovered that was, there was a significant amount of general ledger accounts that kind of were redundant. So we've continued to reduce those general ledger accounts, which just makes our work, obviously, the workload a bit easier in the finance department and makes the streamlining process better, easier for us to get our financials together and then bring our budget together as well. So that's ongoing. And then, yeah, so like I said, we just moved a bunch of the things that were budgeted under finance to administration, just a bit of appropriate for the finance, for the accounting side of things. And then an item that we added this year was the revenues from user charges. So taxation base is, was currently, or was, sorry, paying for the building use, the insurance and the use of vehicles for water, wastewater and the building department. So we've come up with a rate to essentially give a revenue back to Southgate to reduce the taxation load, since taxation is essentially paying for those bills. So we came up with a rate that you'll see in all of those departments to pay, to pay Southgate back for those items, since they are user fee-based. Okay, sorry. And then continuing with overall budget impacts, there are some uncontrollable items and some items that were already approved ahead of the budget process. So debt repayments, they are significant in this year and paying for the Victoria Street Phase One and Phase Two, which the project started in twenty twenty-three and went into twenty twenty-five. So we expect to get those debt or those loans in, hopefully in the summer. But so the repayments are a significant portion of our tax rate increase at three point two six percent. Police services increase for OPP was point six two percent. Conservation authorities, an increase of point one seven. Insurance premiums increase was point one seven as well. Sogging mobility, smart transit was an increase of zero point zero one percent. And then, just so we had the information, the clerk Lindsay Green was able to get that we had one thousand nine ninety-two rides, which was ten individuals for the year in twenty twenty-four. And then carbon taxes, we had a hundred and ten calculated for twenty twenty-four. And just since we haven't had the time honestly to get that exact number, I put that it would be in and around zero point zero six. I know some of that may change now, but we'll see. Okay, and then there were some staffing changes and cola and step increases that have increased the budget overall. And then some position changing. Do you want me to go? Do you want to present this? Sorry.
Thank you. I'll just present this slide. For the overall budget impacts under staffing and wages that are included in the proposed budget, this slide was here before, however, we made some changes. As approved in the meeting, in the regular council meeting, we have a new proposed organizational chart. So that actually saves two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And then an additional sixty-one thousand for the water and wastewater as well, which is user fee-based. And then we updated the number at the top, because we removed one of the director positions from that line.
Thank you, Kayla. Okay, and then in our draft one, staff had brought forward the base percentage and then we had additional items that we could add into the budget that we didn't deem necessary or like essentially, these were kind of voluntary items that we would want to go in with. So we still have some projects outstanding that council could decide to add in, should they wish. So these projects were a replacement vehicle for the bylaw department. The majority of this would come from reserves, but zero point zero nine of an increase on the tax base for the remainder of it. The Swin Park Building, the accessibility needs to be updated. This would be fifty thousand dollars. And a point two six increase to the taxation base. The library position for community outreach has gone in and out. And if council decides the part-time rate, it would be an increase of point one nine percent. And then this project has also come in and out again, is the, the micro servicing of seventy-one for two hundred and nine thousand at one point zero nine of an increase to the taxation base. So if all projects were added back in, it would be one point six three, added to the three point two three rate currently. Okay, and then, so now the slides are going to go through all of the individual departments and the changes year-over-year. So for the finance department, the operating budget for twenty twenty-five is expected to be seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. And this is an operating decrease of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which as I alluded to previously, the insurance was being a hundred percent budgeted under finance previously. So we've moved that to the respective departments, such as recreation, you'll see it in there. The library and then the remainder, the general portion of it is now sitting under admin. So it's kind of just an accounting difference, more than an actual decrease in the operating budget. From the previous draft, we have removed the Director of Corporate Services and added an asset coordinator and financial analyst.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to interrupt and through you, just to clarify that these positions don't currently exist, that they hadn't been recruited. Nobody, we haven't eliminated an ex, a position that is currently filled.
And then there was, there were deduction of three hundred and one thousand of insurance. So you'll see an increase in the admin department of two hundred and sixty-five thousand and then remainder to the various other departments. An increase of twenty-one thousand to tax sales for the administrative fees. So that's a revenue for the finance department. Decreasing cleaning and utilities, this is just another accounting change, so those have moved under admin. We've budgeted for sixty-two thousand dollars for an asset management plan that we are going to a consultant to finish this, so we can get up to code essentially with the government, as we're currently not. Canada Post has increased their postage rates again this year, so we've added fifteen thousand relating to that. Ten thousand are relating to general AR write-offs. And then an increase based on our scope for the twenty twenty-five audit, based on our agreement with KPMG. And then for the capital budget, I have three thousand dollars coming out of taxation. And then for the Durham Hospital, we are planning to give them five thousand dollars, but that is not a taxation hit, that's coming from reserves. Next, going to administration. So for the administration department, just over a million dollars for operations this year, which is an increase of four hundred and six thousand. Again, the insurance is a big swing from here. We have a hundred and thirty thousand of legal fees, just relating to increased litigation this year. And then the twenty-eight thousand that I just mentioned from finance is coming into here, just for the accounting change. And then here you'll see the revenues added for the building department rental to Southgate of thirteen thousand six hundred. So again, this is just for insurance and then use of the building for the building department to Southgate. And then the water and wastewater one, you'll see that under roads, since most of that department pays for everything there. For the capital budget for administration, we have fifty-five hundred budgeted for computers and furniture coming from taxation. Eighty thousand for multi-use facility master plan, which is coming from reserves. That was a project planned in twenty twenty-four and it's just being carried forward. So there's still no impact on taxation, just a plan to bring it forward. Sixty thousand dollars master service delivery review, this is the same thing that this was a twenty twenty-four project item and then we're just carrying it forward to twenty twenty-five and no impact on taxation. And then a contribution to reserves for sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And then here as well, we added the twenty-fifth anniversary for twenty-five thousand, no impact to taxation, all coming from reserves. Planning and economic development, so operations, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, an increase of seventy-nine thousand year-over-year. This change is due to the, the Director of Development and Community Services. Just allocation on the departments that that's going towards, thirty thousand dollars of consultant fees. The Legislative Planning Coordinator, a hundred percent transferred from clerks. Previously, this role was ten percent clerks, ninety percent planning, so now it's moved a hundred percent to planning. And then an increase of thirty-two hundred for training and conferences for this department. And then the capital item for this department is the zoning bylaw review, which is coming from a, a planning reserve for this. So no taxation hit there. Economic development, two hundred and three thousand for the year, which is an increase of sixty-two thousand year-over-year. The increase here is relating to twenty percent of the Director of Development and Community Services, two tourism summer students, twenty-five hundred committed to communities in bloom and advertising for local, local shop campaign. And then no capital budget for this department. So for the clerks department, we have an operating budget of three hundred and three thousand. This is a net decrease year-over-year of just under ten thousand dollars. Again, the same as finance, that Director of Corporate Services was intended to be over financing clerks, so we have removed this. And they, they had a thirty-five percent split of this. Legislative coordinator changed to deputy clerk is in the plan. Removal of planning coordinator, as I said previously, an increase of two thousand dollars for software and then a reduction in miscellaneous revenues for the vacancy bylaw from last year. And then also a reduction in the conferences and training. The capital budget for this department is twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Eighteen thousand two hundred is website migration, which is all coming from reserves. Five thousand three hundred and forty is the clerks-on-call procedure bylaw, which is all taxation and approved ahead of this budget. Okay. So council operating budget is three hundred and one thousand, which is an increase of just under twenty-one thousand for the year. The major pieces of this is seven thousand increase for conferences, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar budget. Five thousand five hundred is to clean this council chambers, which was moved from finance, which, where it was previously being billed and budgeted to. Four thousand for contracted services for the integrity commissioner and a reduction in training of three thousand dollars. So capital budget for council, just twenty-four thousand dollars. The majority of this is a contribution to election reserves, which is coming out of taxation. Contribution to reserve for laptop replacements and then three thousand dollars to have a defibrillator on site here. Okay, and then the building department, so building is a net zero on taxation, but I did add in the, the cost of the building department, which will be nine hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-nine, which is an increase year-over-year of just under a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And again, this is a transfer from reserves, does not come from taxation. So the increases here relate to the Director of Development and Community Services. Seventy thousand relating to legal fees for increased litigation for the year. Twenty thousand for building fees and charges study. And then twenty thousand is coming out of the building reserve to partially fund the multi-use facilities master plan. So the project is eighty thousand total, sixty thousand coming from admin and twenty thousand coming from building. And then here again, you see that thirteen thousand six hundred rent from building to Southgate. So on the admin side, it's a revenue and on building side, it's an expense, so an increase here. And then an increase on gas and oil, insurance and contract fees. And then the capital budget here is a replacement of the HEV. This is also a twenty twenty-four item that wasn't completed, so we've carried it forward, again, coming from reserves. And then laptop and tablet replacement. Okay, bylaw and K nine. So bylaw, total operating budget for the year is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. An increase year-over-year of a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Again, you see the split here of the Director of Development and Community Services. Fifty-eight thousand is relating to legal, again, for increased litigation from last year. And twenty-four thousand five hundred for contracted services. Capital budget here is a car radio, excuse me, for four, uh, forty-five hundred dollars, coming from taxation. K nine, the total operating budget is twenty-three thousand five hundred. This is a significant increase year-over-year. The majority of this coming from the MSS K nine contract, which has been updated. Okay. Five thousand relating to pound service and twenty-five hundred for legal. And then we've increased the dog tag revenue as well, five thousand dollars and no capital budget here. And then again, at the bottom there, I have the item for consideration, which council could consider putting back or putting in period, is the replacement of the, the vehicle for this, for bylaw, which would be an impact of zero point zero nine percent on the taxation base. Okay, fire and emergency management. Nine hundred and eighty-five thousand operating budget for the year, an increase of fifty-four thousand year-over-year. The majority of this is coming from the insurance increase year-over-year, being budgeted under finance and now it's moving to fire. Increases to equipment and supplies, which are partially funded through grants. Seven thousand dollars in bunker gear and maintenance and then telephone and internet for the iPads. Capital budget is significant for this department. The majority of it is a contribution to reserves for future equipment. And then just under thirty thousand is covering an overage. So in twenty twenty-four, we went over budget on the, the rescue truck, so we just need to fund the rest of that. But it's just coming from reserves, it's not a taxation base. And then PPE, fifteen thousand, fifty percent coming from development charges, fifty percent from taxation. Three thousand for computer equipment, tablets for the trucks and a defibrillator for the fire hall. And then again, we add it from the previous round, we added fifty thousand dollars for a new compressor, but that is coming from reserves currently. So other items for consideration that the fire department had included was an aerial ladder truck for a hundred and ninety-three, for a hundred and ninety thousand, which would be fully funded through the development charges. And then a fire station expansion for development charges as well. And then just at the bottom there, you can see we proposed a fire reserve for equipment. So any items that, like if the fire department was over budget and, or had budgeted higher and their expenses came in lower, then we proposed to put those extra funds to a reserve for the equipment to help pay for that. So right there, or this year, it would be around twenty thousand dollars based on twenty twenty-four actuals that would go into a reserve. And we have a similar style reserve set up for winter maintenance in the roads department. Okay, library. So total operating budget for the library this year is five hundred and fifty-three thousand currently, which is an increase of seventy-two thousand year-over-year. Twenty-one thousand is relating to the Mount Forest Library payments, which is a two hundred and forty, uh, two hundred and forty dollar fee per household times two hundred and thirty-two households, which is how you get to that number, that they charge back to us. An increase here again for postage, so forty-six hundred for library, based on the increase of Canada Post. There, the audit fees, in twenty twenty-four, I had budgeted this entirely under finance. But since the library is its own entity and gets audited on its own, we've decided to have those audit fees fall under the library. The cleaning and maintenance has gone up for the library, program materials, professional development and insurance, which was also budgeted entirely under finance previously. Capital budget for the year is fifty-four thousand. So twenty-seven thousand are related to replacements and the growth of collections at the library, which is also funded through DCs partially. Seventeen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars is a contribution to reserves. And then some computers and furniture for the, the library as well. And then also at the bottom there, you see the part-time position for the community outreach, which would be an increase of zero point one nine percent to the taxation base. Okay, recreation and culture. So this year, operating budget is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, an increase year-over-year of eighty thousand. So we removed the Director of Corporate Service of, sorry, of Community. Um, so we removed the Director of Corporate Service of, sorry, of Community Services uh and Development from rec. So then you see the, the allocations change in the previous departments. Um, the insurance went up significantly here, which is virtually the entire uh increase year over year, which was all budgeted under finance in twenty twenty-four. Um, and then just overall operations increase and increase in revenue for programs. And then capital budget here is four hundred and sixty-three thousand, forty-five thousand is a tractor replacement. Um, in the previous round of the budget, I had stated that this was coming from taxation. Unfortunately, that was an error on my part. It was already coming from reserves, so this is not a reduction to the tax rate, um since it was already being funded through reserves. Um, a hundred thousand for the sports field development study, which is coming from DCs. Two hundred, or sorry, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy for the McIntyre Building Accessibility. This would deplete the McIntyre Reserve entirely, um just as a, a note. Fifteen thousand dollars for arena accessibility, which is coming from reserves. Play, playground mulch and C O two upgrades for the arena coming from reserves. Um fifty thousand dollars for recreational master plan coming from reserves. Ten thousand contribution to rural reserves for recreation and one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred to Dundalk. Um recreation. Okay, and then, so the items for consideration, we had again the Swinton Park Accessibility, which would increase the rate to uh point two six percent. And then again, I just made the note that I had the error for the, the tractor replacement there, that it was already coming from reserves. Okay, sorry, I need a sip of water. We're getting into the big ones. Okay, public works. So for the roads department, the budget this year for operations is six point six million, an increase year over year of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The um major portion of this is that debt repayment for Victoria Street. Um changes to the org structure, increases to materials and supplies, and increases to labor for. Uh pavement patching and bridge maintenance for the year. Um, so first I'm gonna go through all the operating budgets of the public works departments, and then I'll go through capital after. Uh so for waste resources and diversion ma- da, diversion management. Operating budget is nine hundred and nine thousand and decrease year over year of two hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, the majority of this is that the capital is significantly lower than the previous year, which is all that kind of means. An increase in revenue for um tipping and carts move from capital to operating, so again, just a change in accounting. And then organizational review changes and role changes make up that difference year over year. Okay, roads capital. I just put it, I know this is really ugly, but I just wanted to have this information in here, as I didn't have it in previous rounds. Um especially for the public meeting, so that if there were any questions regarding which uh roads specifically or um. Roads projects uh were being taken care of this year, so this is kind of everything. I don't know if we wanna go through line by line, or how we should kind of address that, but. We can come back if your, if any of your questions relate to that, I guess. Think you have to zoom out, Holly, so I can move forward. Sorry. And then I, again, I have the, I have all of the capital here, um and I'm happy to go through it if any. Buddy wants the finer details on this stuff, once we get to the public portion of this meeting, but just we have it for, for reference here anyway. And then the operating budget for water this year, again, same as building, this is user fee. Uh funded one hundred percent, not from taxation at all, but the um operations for the year is one point three million. Which is an increase of three hundred and eleven thousand year over year. The majority of this is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, increase in capital contributions and debt repayments. Uh fifty-five thousand increase in chemicals, utilities and insurance, twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, we have water accounts that are insignificant arrears, so this is a, a write-off of those accounts, unfortunately. Um, an increase of fourteen thousand dollars relating to engineering costs. And then the rent owed to Southgate from user fees, so fifty percent of this is coming from water and fifty percent of this is coming from wastewater. And then we also transferred a unit from the roads department to water, which will help balance out the taxation user fee. Um hits as well. And then wastewater, similar, so this is a hundred percent user fee based, not taxation, but the cost is one point zero four million. Um, this is an operating decrease year over year. And that is again, our capital is lower than last year, which is the, the majority of that change. Um, also an increase here for utilities, chemicals, repairs and contracted services, and then also the postage is in here as well. And the increase in insurance, because this was also budgeted under finance previously. And then you see the other fifty percent of the rent to Southgate. Again, this is the, the water capital we can go over um. In better detail at the end, should we, should we wish to, and then the, the wastewater capital. And then uh cemetery and crossing guards, total operating budget for cemetery is fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Which is um an increase year over year, just relating to the Woodland Springs now under township control. And then crossing guards is a, a year over year increase of eight hundred and forty dollars. And then again, so this is just a breakdown of the kind of categories under public works for the um capital spending. So in the roads department, you'll see six point seven three two million dollars in capital. Um, which is relating to streetlights, storm drains, uh road signs and equipment. Um, there is some debt repayment in there, uh there is also significant draws on reserves from this account. Or from this department, rather. Um, for waste resource and diversion management, we have a total capital pro- um budget of eight hundred and six thousand. And then the funding sources off to the right, um you'll see here, from the previous draft, we added in the garage overhead door, which was being funded by reserves. Cemetery, we are looking to upgrade the zero-turn lawnmower, uh which is ten thousand dollars from reserves, wastewater. Um, I think it's a five point two million. Yeah, five point two million for the year, which is again, not coming from the tax base, it's coming from the user fees. And then um we also secured a grant for some of this project here as well. And then the water department, I can't see the total in there. Six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twelve, six hundred and twelve thousand, again, not taxation, but user fee. And then for W R D M, uh this is the Dundalk. Sorry, yeah, Dundalk Transfer Station, um. Upgrade, so this, these are the changes that will happen to that, that site. And then this is essentially just uh another summary of all of the department's uh capital projects, which I've gone through. In each slide, but this is just a summary of everything and all of their funding sources. And then capital funding sources, this is where it gets kind of ugly, I would say. So six point, almost eight million is coming from unrestricted reserves, so these are reserves that we um. Can use for whatever council deems appropriate. Um, as opposed to the restricted reserves, which are typically the development charges, so they have. Um, uses that are specified that we can't change, so those projects come from there, so there's. There's a significant draw from that as well at almost three million dollars. Um, we did secure grants of uh just over four million dollars, which is exceptional for the township for this year. Um, and then development contributions, the two point eight million almost. Is um the funding from Flato to support the funding of the Eco Park Highway ten development. And then, so we plan to sell assets this year, um essentially just to trade in value for some of our. Some of our items at around thirteen thousand, we hope for. We aren't planning to issue any debt in this year, which is great. Um, and then a transfer to capital fund of one point nine million. Transfer to reserves of four hundred and ninety-three thousand. Um, so you can see, we have a significant draw on reserves and uh pretty low. Um, money go back, going back into reserves. Again, this is mostly for um, the four hundred and ninety thousand is made up of the elections money for council. The laptops replacements for council, uh the reserves for recreation of a hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred. Library has a reserve going in of seventeen thousand. Um, and then the Mount Forest Aquatic Center of the fifty thousand. And then we have significant debt repayment in this year of just under a million dollars, and then debt interest of three hundred thousand. And then overall, so where does that bring us for twenty twenty-five? So the increase of three point two three percent blended would increase um. Based on the average home assessment of two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, the increase year over year would be a hundred and forty dollars and sixty-four cents. Monthly, this uh works out to just under twelve dollars a month for an increase. If your assessment is in and around that, two hundred and eighty-three thousand. And then um just to add some more math and more confusion to everybody. The equivalent is uh forty-nine tha- forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents per year, per one hundred thousand of assessment. So if you took those percentages below, so if you took the one point five eight five six three two multiplied by your. Individual assessment, that would be the increase that you're looking at for this year, based on three point two three percent. And then this is the departmental breakdown um of where all of the taxation dollars are going, so per each dollar of taxation. This is the breakdown of where it's all going. I know it's kind of small, so forty-five cents for every dollar in twenty twenty-five is going to roads. Um, six cents of every dollar is going to solid waste or W R D M. Five cents recreation, four cents library, two cents to planning, one cent economic development, two cents to council. Administration and finance I lumped together at fifteen cents. Um, fire is six cents, police nine cents, conservation authority one cent. Other protective services or bylaw and canine is two cents, and then there are a few others under um. That one category is one cent, they're just all too small and made the pie even uglier than it already is. Um, so that relates to, I believe, uh. Should I forget what it is? Oh, I think it was um health services and something else, sorry. It's, it's under a hundred and ninety thousand total for the budget, though. Okay, and general reserves changes ins and outs, so we start the year with approximately thirty million dollars in reserves. Um, it's important to remember, as I alluded to before, there are re- restricted reserves. Um such as the water reserve, wastewater reserves, those can only be used for those items. Um, so those make up a significant chunk of these. Um, there's also development charges, which again are uh restricted reserves, we can't use them for anything other than growth. And projects that are already in our development charges study. Um, so going in this year is three point seven million, um I think. Yeah, one point eight five million is to refund the water reserve, because it was left in an opposite balance. So once we get the reserves for the Victor, or sorry, once we get the loan for the um Victoria Street project, I will be refunding the water reserve. With this money, so it has been essentially just drawn into overdraft, you could say. Um, and then uh for working purposes, we're adding in fifteen thousand, seventy-five thousand for reserve funds. And then the obligatory uh reserves are the development charges and C C B F. So those all have specific uses, so they have to go into this category, so obviously the development charges is kind of a best guess. Um, so this number could come in lower, but. Um, essentially, the money that we're putting into reserves that we can use at free will is four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for the year. And drawing, as you can see, ten million dollars. Um, so that is quite significant, um I don't wanna put anything. I, I don't wanna eh, make that anything other than what it is, it's. Not ideal situation, um and definitely is not sustainable going forward. But um that leaves us at twenty-four million five hundred thousand uh in our reserves. And then our debenture summary, so this is essentially just uh where we sit for our debt load, so the um. The municipal act says that we can take on up to twenty-five percent of our annual source income in payments. So that means that I, we plan to bring in through this budget, twelve point seven million. Multiplied by twenty-five percent, so that is three point one million, so that is our essentially debt load. So we can't go above three million in debt, and that, just sorry, the debt repayments, that's not debt total, that's just debt repayments for the year. So as you can see the bottom there, it's um just below one point three million is our debt load right now, so that's our repayment for the year. So we are well within that debt load, um which is a good thing. Um, so lots of room there for future projects, should we need to take on debt for those. And then this I put in um just for council and the public to be aware of kind of where we sit today. If all of our wish lists come true for the next however many years. Um, I've outlined a few, several projects to the left hand, I know it's really hard to see. Um, these are all projects that we have in mind that are kind of coming down the pipeline. Um, best case scenario, if everything is a hundred percent and we go through with it all. I just wanted council to have an awareness of where that debt load would sit in the next ten years, if everything went through as is. Um, there's obviously lots of room for movement here to make things work better, we could increase loan. Uh life, so right now, we typically take a ten-year loan, so I mean, you could increase that um. The life of the loans and the amortization, which would help lower that debt repayment. Obviously, the longer the life of your loan, the higher the interest overall. Um, so this uh is outlining essentially that we have about one point nine million for room for debt load in twenty twenty-five. But I just wanted to outline that by twenty twenty-nine, we would have no more capacity for debt repayment. Um, should all of these projects happen, and again, it, this doesn't mean anything, like council is not approving a ten-year budget at this point. Weird, I just wanted to outline to them that if we took on more debt this year to alleviate the rate, or even next year to alleviate the rate. It would have a ripple effect going forward, um so we just need to be cognizant of that. And then there are a few more items that we could remove or defer um to lessen the rate for this year. So the one item remaining is the Main Street West pre-designed, so we could defer of the forty-seven thousand dollar project, thirty thousand dollars. To twenty twenty-six, which would be an impact to reduce the three point two three rate of one point, or point one six of a percent. And then we could also defer um other projects for the Main Street West pre-designed, which are just water and wastewater. So again, they wouldn't have an impact on taxation, but we would also defer them. Okay, and that's the end of my presentation. So if we want to go ahead, do you want me to read the one comment? So I did have one comment received by email to the clerk's email. Um, essentially that the eight point five eight percent um was just too significant and too high. Um, so obviously, we're coming in tonight at three point two three percent. Um, so I just wanted to have that brought forward, since it, it was an email that was sent, but no longer applicable, essentially.
Thank you, Taylor. Lot of information there, you've put a tremendous amount of time into this and work, thank you so much for that, and indeed all the staff. Uh, Madam Clerk, so now we'll turn to the open forum. Question of the meeting, who's first?
Uh, so we'll have Heather and Tom Arnett. Uh Heather, I'm not sure if you guys are speaking together or separately, but. You uh both signed up, so we'll have you first, and then if anyone else in the audience. Uh wants to speak, then you can just come up to the uh podium with the mic and just state your name and uh say your comments. So, yep, so come up, yep. Thanks, Heather.
Welcome, Heather, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh thank you Mayor Brian Milne, Barbara Dobrine is our deputy mayor, all of our um. Staff and all of the council members. Um, I really have to say that the amount of work that goes into these is just amazing. Um, and taking this down from that eight point five eight percent. Down to what we're looking at today, I think is significant. Um, I did um submit um some eh eh, some comments here, but I think it's more about. What that drawdown is on reserves and concerning, I think, when, I think if we can get that. And concerning, I think, when, I think if we can get that tax increase down under four percent, that if it could help in any way to to um not draw down quite as much on the reserves. I think it's significant, as as I think we've, as mentioned by Taylor, is that we just can't continue that. We have to uh really watch those reserves or else we would be in trouble in not too many years here. Um, so that's probably one of my biggest concerns. Um, our, another one is the roads, it's been a major concern for us. Um. And and speaking to, um, if I may, Jim, is some comments that Jim has made. We have to agree that if we don't have the money to take care of our roads, um, and if we, and it is significant at that forty five cents on the dollar. Um, but if we don't have the roads, um, we go back to gravel and we're going backwards instead of forward with our roads, if that's the case that we have to do. Um, and I had a few questions and I don't know when they can be answered, but if roads had to be returned to gravel because we didn't have the funding, what's the criteria to decide which roads would remain as a hard surface? And what would go back to gravel? So it would be interesting as a taxpayer, as a resident of knowing how that decision would be made. Is it this year, we don't have the funding and we need roadwork done on this certain road? So it's going to have to go back to gravel or are we going to look at this more long term? I hope it doesn't have to come to that, to be quite honest. Um, how many roads in Southgate are tar and chip? I don't know that answer, I don't even know what we do have in tar and chip. Um, how do we compare to neighboring municipalities with the number of roads that are hard surface versus what we have as gravel? What is that comparison? It would be interesting to know, like Gray Highlands, West Gray. Um. I know we'd be encroaching onto other counties, actually, if we kind of move outside of that. Um. And wondering if, not that I want to pay more taxes, I don't think anybody wants to pay more taxes, but can we look at some of the road reserve monies that have to come from reserves? And can we look at a slight increase in the tax rate? And bring that up closer to the four percent to help cover those expenses. Um, I I just, I I hate to see us go with a lower tax increase this year and then seeing some surprises next year and we're all of a sudden now behind the eight ball. So, you know, I I I, can we, can we look at that again and just see if there's anything we can do with it? Um. I have to agree again with Jim saying, you know, um, and I'm going to quote you, Jim, if you don't mind. Um, I think I wrote it in here and I may not have. But it was about our 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 commitments, you know, with our capital managements. And, you know, are we going to meet them if we don't increase the taxes to pay for our roads? So, that's all I really have to say, um, and and as I said, it's it's um, it's that significant drawdown on the reserves that is probably our main concern.
Very good, thank you, Heather.
Thanks.
I can tell you anecdotally that my mail lady says the roads are far better in Southgate than they are in West Gray. I have no empirical answer or uh discussion, but. John.
So I was uh able to do some of the research for your questions there, Heather. And um, so for question number one, when we do turn a road back to gravel, if we're going to do it permanently, we would do traffic studies, traffic counts um to see the number of vehicles per day. But we also take into consideration the residences or properties on that road as well. If there's, you know, twelve houses close to the road, we don't really want to turn that back to gravel and make it a dust bowl for them, so all that stuff goes into consideration for that. Um, for your second question, uh, there's currently forty nine kilometers of tar and chip road in Southgate, which is about twenty four and a half blocks. Twenty four and a half blocks. Yeah. Um, as far as the percentage of paved roads in Southgate compared to neighboring, the former Eggermont Township is fairly comparable to neighboring townships, but the former Proton Township does have a higher percentage of paved roads in it. Um, they were paved just before amalgamation. And for your fourth question, uh, there is no funding provided from the provincial government for maintenance of the roads. There is funding, um, grant opportunities for capital projects, but not for the maintenance of them.
Thanks, John. Okay, someone else wishing to speak? Come on up, Jerry, welcome. The floor is yours, sir.
Jerry McNulty, and again, thanks to everyone for all the work that goes into the budget process and thanks for representing us. Thanks for working for us on our behalf every day. Road question as well, um, we know that there's increased transport trucks and there's heavier farm equipment. My understanding was that the the uh shops that are being developed on the rural roads are paying a higher commercial tax. And that tax is supposed to be going back to look after the roads. So I'm just wondering if there's any, is that something that I dreamt or?
No, no, I would say as a general rule, that's the way it uh is understood. Is it in, so policy wrote down somewhere? No, but I will let John take a comment or make a comment if he would like to.
Um, Jim might be a better one for this, I'll be honest with you, so.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Jim?
I think this has been kind of posed before and um, yeah, in theory you're correct, but do we break it out that way? No, um, the industrial tax or whatever isn't got a portion per se that this three percent extra goes on to roads, but that it would be a good policy and and target to head for, but it it currently doesn't happen that way, even though maybe our train thought is that way. It it's not on paper and it doesn't work out that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Already then, that uh, that will adjourn, do we need a motion to adjourn the public meeting, Madam Clerk? Oh.
Sorry.
Do we need a motion to adjourn the public meeting or do we just?
Just, no, we'll just, it was adjourned at.
Declare it adjourned.
Six fifty six P M.
All right then, so we'll carry on into our uh special council meeting to further our deliberations on the budget. I need a motion to confirm the agenda. Jason and Barb, thank you. All those in favor? That is carried. We need to resolve in the committee of the whole. Motion is there to resolve, Jim, thank you, second by. Joan, thank you. All those in favor? That is carried. Now do we need to appoint a chair for the committee? Barb is going to nominate me, is there a seconder? Jim, thank you, all those in favor? Carrie. Reports municipal officers, Treasurer Taylor McMahon, or Mc, yeah, McMahon, um. Anything further you wish to? I guess you have your report here, I'll let you go through the report, I I think we've got a fairly good understanding of where the budget is at right now, but please.
Um, so essentially, I, last year, I think I had presented two different presentations, one for public, one for council. This year I just wrapped it all into one since um all the information is virtually the same and the public is staying anyway, so. Um, I don't know if council wants to uh further deliberate, I'm sorry that um the three point two three may have been kind of a shock to council to see that. Um, but yeah, it was, it was left as we weren't at a final hard number around six percent when we left the last meeting. And um, staff did go over the growth number, so that changed, that impacted the rate quite a bit um to the positive for the rate pairs. Um, so yeah, three point two three percent.
Okay, so maybe what I'll do is I'll uh to Heather's point, and and I've heard the same sentiment from uh uh others, including some counselors and staff. Is there, let's have a discussion around, do we want to increase the tax rate? First of all, and then if we do want to do that, we'll decide what are we going to do, how are we going to do that? So. What are the feelings of council? Martin, go ahead, please.
Well, yeah, from the last one to this, it was kind of wow. What services and what everything did we cut off and cut out and dismember the budget? And I think we should put some of the stuff back, like for the roads. It should be up like four or five percent to so keep us a little bit level, so we don't get into trouble next year. So if there's roads that we can put in, um, and ke- keep up some of the reserves, I think that's something to look at, so.
Great.
I wasn't, I wasn't disgusting, like I am a taxpayer too, at six percent, it didn't bother me. But when I do see the three, I know five years down the road, I'm going to get hit with a twelve percent tax hike and I don't want that.
Right.
So.
Okay, any other thoughts, Jason, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, I guess I'll echo Martin's thoughts, um, I know, I sat here and said I I wanted it lower at eight percent and I agree, um. Or I agree, it it's nice to get it down that low, I was pretty shocked and 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 I appreciate all the work he's have done doing that. Uh, to Heather's points, and we've known, I I'm always a roads guy, so like I was thinking that we got it under five, you know, five and a half and and put more into the roads, I'd be happy, um. I'd like to see that micro servicing go back in and and yeah, any other little jobs we could do, like, you know, five and a half, I I'd be happy with that. Like I said, we don't, I'm always about roads, roads, road, that's, that's the big thing, so that's common.
Any other thoughts, Joan? And then I'll have Monica next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's my thought too, I I mean, three is really good, but I think we could go back to about five. I think we need to put back something into reserves and also look at some of the roads, thank you.
Okay, Monica?
Hi, yes, can anyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, everybody, great to see you, uh, great uh work on the budget. Um, yeah, I think I'm echoing uh the same sentiment, uh, when we take a look at uh in the major revenue is still um really heavy on property taxation. Uh, we should encourage uh diversification um in businesses, which will cause more wear and tear in the roads, uh, which I do think uh the resident uh Jerry McNulty was touching on as well. So I really appreciate that comment. Um, I do agree, I'm very happy to see that the tax rate did come down. Uh, I do also agree that we do have some wiggle room to increase it, to get those micro surfacing back in. And also to um help encourage uh continue uh diver- diversification to have more businesses and um increase in commercial tax revenue. I think that will help uh to just have complete uh property taxation heavily relied on.
Okay, thank you, Monica, anyone else have any thoughts? Go ahead, Barb.
Thank you, and through you, um. I, like, we all agree, I think we all agree, that roads uh maintaining our roads is important because that moves people, product, services and commerce. But um we're not good, by adding back in projects, we're not going to actually repair what we've already proposed to draw from reserves. Um, and I think that is the concern that Taylor has been expressing is can't keep drawing down the reserves significantly. I absolutely agree that we have some room that we could um maybe draw less from reserves with the projects we've already considered, like the sand shed. Instead of drawing the full amount from reserves with a commitment to pay it back over six years, maybe we only draw fifty percent from reserves or we just bite the bullet and and add that back in from taxation as a, as a proposal, either fifty percent or um where we borrow from reserves fifty percent and pay it back over a shorter period of time. Or put it back in, because we've already agreed that that is, you know, a necessary evil. And and um, but again, I I agree that the micro surfacing helps prolong the life of our of our road. But that was three point, that's how I was trying to find it, three, it was over three percent, wasn't it? Two hundred and, oh no, what?
One point zero nine.
Point zero nine.
Two hundred nine.
Yeah, the the sand shed is the the three.
The sand shed was three point, it was three. Um, so, you know, if we start adding back in projects, then we're not we're not reducing our load on reserves. So I'm, I'm not sure which is the best route to go. Um, definitely, we can't keep drawing on reserves, otherwise we'll, we'll end up in trouble as, as you mentioned. I did want to just clarify that when you're, you talk about the Durham Hospital and the Mount Forest Pool um coming out of reserves, those were earmarked to come out of the community funds, the Southgate Solar Fund and the Eco Park Royalty Fund, which is meant for those things. Um, if they're, they're a fund that that we're benefiting from and those are the types of projects that they would be suited for, as opposed to roads projects and sand sheds and things like that. Um, and my other comments, looking at my notes here. The carbon tax, I think, is very conservative, because I don't think it factors in any of our suppliers, our, our contractors who are probably passing on their carbon tax that they don't get a rebate for. So just to, just to expand on that piece, it's an uncontrollable cost. Currently, we, the township, the municipality, the county, the fire department, th- they do not get a rebate like homeowners. So that is an uncontrollable cost as well. Um, I, I would like to propose that we not fund the sand shed totally from reserves or at all, and I'll, I'll, we can have the conversation on how we get there.
Martin?
Yeah, the sand shed, you know, being sixty thousand because, oh, we didn't put in the demolition. Well, if we keep putting that off, it's going to be another sixty thousand just for material next year, so that's the, I like that idea of half coming from reserve or the full, but to put it back in, I know it's three point one, but you need salt to do the roads that are in good.
Well, just some cowboy math, if I could borrow an expression. If we added two percent back in at a hundred ninety two, three uh dollars, thousand dollars per percentic, we added in two percent, that would put three hundred and eighty four thousand back into reserves. So if we were to fund three hundred and eighty four thousand of the, of the sand shed, that would eliminate taking that out of reserves. So whichever way you want to do it, either fund that, that would achieve, I think, the sentiment of what what I'm hearing here, whether everybody agrees that that's what, how the mechanism of how you want to do it. Um, cowboys aren't always right, but sometimes they're fun. But anyway, um, sorry. Yeah, careful, don't, let's not go there, it's been, it's getting on in the day. Um, anyway, just a thought, anybody, I'll, Jason, please.
Um, I just had one for Taylor. I don't know if you could say the last ten year, I don't know if, you know, you haven't been here that long, what kind of, I I should know maybe the answer to, but how many, what dollars in reserves have we been using in the past per year? Like, I know we haven't been using a lot, but just, I I get the whole thing, using up the reserves, but it's also, I guess I'd say to everybody here, do we want to use reserves to kind of maybe get back on track a bit or do we want to tax people?
Right.
And we, you know, I I don't think there's good times coming for the next couple of years, so I I don't know, I get it, but we don't want, I just wonder if you had any idea, I I can't even remember.
I don't specifically know, I'd have to go through the audited financial statements, but what I can say is that twenty twenty five is an interesting year because previous to this, we have um, put in for taxation to, for roads specifically, to roads capital projects while also funding the reserves. So because the capital um for roads department this year is so significant, we took that reserve out. So in our original draft, when staff was meeting, um, we did have, I think, a million dollars uh going into a contribution for reserves, which would have been great in this year, but also would have added five percent. Um, and we came in thinking that's probably not um good for the appetite this year essentially, so I I would like to get back to that where we are funding the, we're funding kind of a balance from reserves, taxation, while also putting money back in. Um, but this year, the, the need for capital spending was just so great, it was kind of. Um, but this year, the, the need for capital spending was just so great, it was kind of not feasible. Um, but I could definitely look at previous years.
Barb?
And, and to that, I think we could go back to previous budgets, I would imagine, and, and see, but this year with the winter that we had and the amount of snow plowing and snow removal and in a snowbank pushback curb, you know, pushing the snow back to the curbs, um, I'm, I would imagine that we drew the, that road stabilization reserve that we kept putting in as a result of less winter. Um, I would imagine we've pretty much eaten that up.
Well, we'll have to kind of wait and see what the rest of this one year is like and the start of the next one year, what it's like as well, so. If we have a soft November's end December, then we might not be in too bad a shape either, so.
For that, we also have to wait for the twenty twenty-four numbers to be done, and since we're still in the twenty twenty-three audit, um, I know in that, in that year specifically, we, we funded that reserve, so that's great, and hopefully twenty-four is similar, but we will see how that goes.
Monica, you have your hand up, go ahead, please?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair. Uh, so just like some of the strengths of the budget, I just made some notes here, um, I, I do, I do believe like the budget does project six hundred thousand in new tax revenue from growth, uh, which indicates, uh, increased development in the township, which is good. Um, I also noted that, uh, let's see here. The strategic capital investments fourteen point four percent, so the township is prioritizing infrastructure improvements, which are necessary for the long-term economic and residential growth, so I was just making some notations, uh, just to make sure we keep things like in perspective of the good things and strengths, which I see. Um, just a question about operating costs. Uh, when we take a look at the operating costs, um, I see that they, they have, uh, increased, uh, quite a bit, um, from what I understand, it's around ten percent plus. Um, and I understand that with growth and inflation does justify some of the increase and rise in operational cost. Are there any cost-cutting measures, um, or service e- efficiency that could reduce the operational cost or burden? Um, I guess specifically, is this more for this year or projected, or do you think that this could also increase going forward? Do you think that these will become more like standard operating costs, or is there possibility that they could go up or down for next year?
Are you meaning operating expenses specifically for roads or any particular section?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, so if I were to look at like operating budget growth.
Overall.
Overall.
Yeah, um, so this is kind of, uh, anyone's best guess, and if you can hit, if you can hit the target, I, I, I'd pay you some money. But, um, obviously there are some uncontrollables in here, um, like the cost of living, carbon tax, um, the COLA in, yeah, sorry, cost of living increases that we give to staff, um, while also just an increase on inflation in general. So I think the Bank of Canada tries to keep it around two percent, um. Again, try, but I mean, we still have items that will increase no matter what, because we're getting downloading from several levels of government as well as from our suppliers, so it's kind of a hard number to track. Um, I will say that this budget was brought forward to council as a bare bones item. Like I said, before we even brought to council, we took out contributions to reserves, because we figured that it would just be unfeasible to bring forward a fifteen, twenty percent increase. Um, which we, we could have done, and then that would have left our reserves in a great balance and all of these things, but, um, the way the world is right now, it looks like operating will, will increase, no doubt.
At very good points. Uh, let's see and hope that some things that happen may, may change, uh, things for the better, so thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Monica. Any other comments, thoughts? Barb?
In talking about the uncontrollables, we are fortunate, I suppose, that the province stepped in to cover the, um, the wage and contract renewal of the OPP to, you know, bring it down to a much more reasonable increase. But what happens next year? Because there's, their wages are not gonna go down, and we're gonna end up, we're gonna, I think we're gonna end up with a surprise next year in that you know, you can borrow from one, but it's still gonna be there. So we don't know that, that's an unknown. An insurance, if we have any more claims, that, I mean, to have only a nine percent increase is, uh, is a treat compared to the last two years.
Okay. Jim, please.
Yeah, so what I've been hearing here at the table, and it's just a suggestion, um, it sounds like and staffer are concerned too about the reserves and, and how we're heading that way and taking away again this year from them. Um, is there a balance we can do and still bring maybe the roads micro surface project back in, if that's what council would like to see at one percent, and then the sand dome, instead of take that extra one percent back to taxation and the rest, the remainder from the reserve, to do that balance would bring you to that level and satisfy some, both of the needs, but again, just a suggestion.
Okay. Uh, what I heard, uh, from John, I don't know, a meeting or two ago, uh, regarding the, uh, micro surfacing was that sure, it could be done this year, but it really didn't need to be done until next year. John, can we get a sense maybe of wh- what would be the value of doing it this year in a long-term scenario?
So obviously, the sooner you put it on, the better, it's more it's gonna do for you.
Right.
Um, it is, they typically say that five, six-year-old asphalt is getting about the the limit of the EC life in the asphalt, but it is still within that limit that we could put it off. That being said, we've been trying to get on a program where we do some every year and that becomes a domino effect down the road as well.
Right, right. Pay me now, pay me later. Fair enough. Jim?
Yeah, I, I brought it in, I brought it back out, um, I would like to see it done. The micro surfacing, the, uh, sand dome, it's not like we'd still be putting a tender out for the sand dome, would we not?
Yeah, no, there'd still be a, a, a tender go out for it. Now, I was looking at the report from last fall and the way it was worded in the direction from council to staff was that we would put out a tender for a building that would fit on the existing footprint of what's there. So whether we still follow that same direction or not is, uh, up to council.
Right, okay. Monica?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Chair, just to echo, I was just being said about, um, the strategic capital investments for roads, municipal drains, public safety. Uh, it's looking like it's fourteen plus increase, however, um, I think that's a a great, uh, early budget adoption strategy in order to make sure that, uh, we get ahead of, get ahead of things. Um, I too would say taking care of the roads are very important and putting it back in, I know it could be done later, but I do think that'd be really, really great to have it in now if possible.
Anything's possible. If you want to pay for it. Jason?
Um, going back to your point about the micro surfacing, um, with the sta- with the sand shed, John, I guess it's to you, I'm, I'm still a little I mean, I get it's, we're gonna have to replace it down the road. Um, I went in there one day, it was raining, and I, I get there, it needs repairs, but I, I'm just wondering, in this, this climate we're in, we don't want to take the dervs. Is, I don't know, those old buildings, that like, I, I know it's going downhill, but I, I think it would last, um, longer than we think, maybe not, uh, I don't know, man, I'm just wondering, it's, it's kind of along the same as Brian's, can we put it off and?
I get, I guess, uh, I'll just, I'll just say, I don't disagree with you, but if we were to, as a thought, if we were to put the micro surfacing back in at one percent roughly, um, and another one percent into reserves, and then revisit the sand dome topic, we would still have reserves available to do the project if need be, or if we change our mind, if we get an RFP or a quote back and it's, you know, wildly expensive, maybe at that point we do determine that we're just gonna fix it for now, and leave the money in the reserves that we've put in. That would still get us to that around that five, five and a quarter percent, plus get the micro surfacing done and allow us to have another look at the, the sand dome. Jim?
Would, would we be able to talk with the county? Cause I'm hearing they aren't using their shed up the road very much.
John, I had that discussion this morning, so I'll let John respond to that.
So in discussions with the county last fall, they were gonna up their usage of that shed this year, um, because of what you're kind of alluding to, is if you don't use it, you lose it, and they want, they want to retain it, so they wanted to use it to show that it is getting used and it is of value to them. Uh, they also use it as kind of a surge storage, I'll say, for some of their other depots further north, like Chatsworth and that, that, uh, or not Chatsworth, uh, Clarksburg, that will empty their dome out typically in a winter, and then they have some already. It's down here, but they can just truck it up there as well, so.
But as you mentioned to me this morning, there isn't enough capacity in that dome out there to put both their needs and ours into there.
Not all of our needs.
No, we still need to use this one.
Yeah, so yeah, we did about fifty fifty of our stuff here as, as opposed to down there, so.
Cause my thought was, well, if we can put all our sand out there with the county building, we'll buy a hundred thousand dollar loader and we'll still be five hundred thousand in the good, but as John just said, that won't work. Barb?
So, two questions. The condition of the sand shed now, are we losing or compromising the quality or condition of the sand salt stored there? Um, with its current condition, I guess is, is one of my questions. And the second question is, is when the when the proposal came back, there were quotes, and the one company committed to holding the twenty twenty-four quote if we went ahead with it in twenty twenty-five. But we'd be likely at least ten percent increase if we put it off. And then you're saying that we still have to go to an RFP? I thought that, that the report summarized what was available, and I thought that was the RFP, so I misunderstood that. Would still have to go to an RFP and the prices could come in anywhere.
Uh, so that company still has committed, I was talking to them last week, and they've still committed to keeping that twenty twenty-four pricing for us. Um, it was my understanding from the council meeting last fall that, um, you directed us to do, add it to the budget for twenty twenty-five with it going to, uh, RFP for. Now, we could ask you, we could come and ask you to waive purchasing policy and go with that company as well.
Jason, please.
Uh, excuse me, when you talked about all the same footprint, you're talking, take that concrete out too, just the exact same.
So one of the, the benefits of, of that companies was that, that concrete pad that's there is already preloaded and pre-stressed for going on there, so there would be no engineering needed in the ground if we kept that concrete pad there and, and built on top of it.
So new walls too, like concrete walls?
There'd be new walls, yeah.
Any more thoughts, Jim?
Uh, the other one, I was talking to a guy I used to work with at the four oh seven, and they've been using it out on the east end. And I had kind of talked to you about the cement blocks where they go up about, they're the prefab blocks, go up about three, four blocks. And then the, uh, steel Quonset hut enclosed on the one end, just kept like and he was thinking they were bringing those in around two hundred and fifty thousand. So that's where I'm at, the, do we do, uh, or, you know, and put that out, cause that would eliminate having to do the footprint, right, if you're just using blocks.
And maybe defer to the CBO on what would be required for footings under those walls. But again, when you get into the rectangular building, as we run into area that we have with this property for the size of building required for the capacity that we require as well.
Barb?
And didn't you say that if we go beyond the footprint that it is currently, we, we're restricted to how much because of the space, that we'd have to do studies?
Yeah, for any of the, the dirt that we haul out for just checking for contamination and.
So I don't want to turn this budget meeting into an engineering study, um, so I, I, I think we can agree that it's probably gonna cost us, you know, in that half million dollar or more to, to replace that building. So as I said before, if we, if we were to put the micro surfacing back in at two hundred nine thousand, which is one point zero nine, one point one percent taxation increase, that would push us up to four point three. And then if we were to put another one percent or two hundred and, or a hundred ninety-two thousand into reserves for the roads and revisit the, uh, the sand dome issue, uh, once the, uh, once, once the season is over, then we would still have the opportunity to use those reserves to replace that sand dome. And that would push our increase to, like I said, to five, five and a quarter percent. Which I haven't heard anybody say that that's not what they want to do. So at the risk of shutting down discussion on that particular, give John a bit of a rest. Cause there's all kinds of different ways to chop and slice and dice it, but at the end of the day, uh, what I'm hearing is that council would like to see it an increase of around that five, five and a quarter percent, and, uh, that would, that would do that. So, go ahead, Barb, please.
So, just to your point, and I don't disagree, uh, with your cowboy math or your suggestions, but we would still proceed with getting quotes on or assessing the sand shed.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait until twenty twenty-six to do so. We can still, and the reserves would still be there, and if it, if it comes down to, push comes to shove, that, you know, now we really need to fix this before the snow flies again, um, then I, I could live with that. And I actually had, had hoped that we were gonna be in around five percent.
Yeah.
Before the budget started.
It wouldn't make our financial position in, in terms of reserves any worse than it is now, or being proposed now, and probably make it better. Cause we'd have a hundred and ninety-two thousand back into reserve, so we would be gaining a little bit of capacity there, not a whole lot, we'd be gaining some. And I definitely want to keep Taylor happy. I don't want to listen to that all year. I told you. No, I, I'm just, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Okay, um, any other thoughts? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm.
I think so. I think the, the clerk is
Yeah.
Provide, gonna provide some verbiage as to
So.
An hour and a half or two hours of discussion.
So your first point through you, Mayor Milne, the first point was to just add a general one percent increase uh, back into reserves, right?
I think so, yes.
So, Taylor, tell me if my wording's wrong. So it would be, be it resolved that the committee recommend that council direct staff to fund the general roads reserve equivalent to a one percent increase of the tax rate? Okay, so that would be a motion on its own. And then.
Well, let's deal with that one.
Yeah, let's deal with that.
Let's deal with that one first. Okay, so you've heard the motion, is someone prepared to move that? Martin, is there a second, or Barb, thank you. Any further discussion on that particular, uh, initiative? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Barb, would, uh, the deputy mayor would like a recorded vote, Madam Clerk, please?
So recorded vote was called, um, on the motion, I'll read it again, be it resolved that the committee recommend that council direct staff to fund the general roads reserve equivalent to a one percent increase of the tax rate. Mayor Milne?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Dobreen?
Yes.
Counselor Rice?
Yes.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Counselor Shipston?
Yes.
Counselor John?
Yes.
Counselor Singsores?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, that's carried.
Thank you.
So, this is where I'm getting confused. Um, okay.
Okay, so the Holstein sand shed, you're saying to take that out, remove it?
Yes.
Okay, so be resolved that the committee recommend that council direct staff to remove the Holstein sand shed replacement project as previously added in the second round.
Right. But also to add back into the, you wanna leave that for another motion? To?
Microsurfacing is separate. Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
Keep it straight.
All right, keep it straight. All right, fair enough.
So move her second, if you're ready for that one, yeah.
You'll move, Jason will move that, Jim will second. Any further discussion? Jason?
Uh, no, I'm not sure if this, we're just talking about this now, I guess, right?
The sand dome specifically.
The motion or the, oh, sorry, we're still on the, no, we're on the.
We're in the motion to remove the sand dome.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, okay, sure.
We are committee the whole, so the rules are more relaxed if you.
Yeah, no, that's fine, okay. Yeah, no, no, I'll wait, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Sorry, can I just clarify one thing?
Please.
Yep.
This means that, do you still want me to show it as if we're gonna draw the remainder of the sand shed out of reserves? Or just completely take it out?
Completely.
But we have the funds there.
Is the intent, correct. And leave that money in the reserves. It's available for the sand dome if needed. I mean, as I said, we'll revisit that whole discussion about what we're gonna do with the sand dome. Are we gonna replace it? Are we gonna fix it? Whatever. But at that point, as I say, if we do need to draw on reserves, it won't make our situation any worse than it would have been had we gone ahead and just replaced it. Right? Should make it better. Jason?
But what, maybe this does pertain. With the upcoming, hopefully sale of the Stevens and Pitt, we've mentioned before, I don't know, that's to you, Jim. Where will those funds be going? And will they go directly into roads reserves? I think we talked about that last year. Since it's a pit gravel kinda keep, so I'm just kinda wondering, just, you know, that could be another significant chunk that goes in.
Go ahead, Jim, please.
Yeah, so previous treasurer's comments were that it would go into the general reserve. It doesn't go, but if council wants to direct it that way, that's, I guess there's choice, so. But generally, the comments were that it would go into a general reserve for whatever.
Right.
So it's that's now.
So at that time of the sale, will we be able to decide where it goes at that time or?
Absolutely.
So currently, just for council's awareness, I do have it in the projection for roads, so it is included in that twenty-four point six million, but we could change where I have it allotted to and it's in at one point two, two million would be the sale price.
I didn't even ask John what he thought, cause I know where he wants it to go. Okay, any further discussion on that particular motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. And the third motion regarding the microsurfacing.
So, and I think I have this right, but tell me if I'm not. So it would be that the committee recommend that council direct staff to add the side row twenty-four microsurfacing project at two hundred and nine thousand to the budget to be funded through taxation at one percent and through reserves for the remainder? Is that right?
Uh, no, I.
No, okay.
I don't think you need to put the percentage.
Entirely taxation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's easy then. So that's just a straight add. So it would be be resolved that the committee recommend that council direct staff to add the side row twenty-four microsurfacing project at two hundred and nine thousand to the budget?
And just to recognize that Jim's gonna fix it right or wrong, he's gonna make the motion to do that. Is there a second here? Martin? Any? Yeah, we could. Uh, any, sorry? The deputy mayor would like a recorded vote on that, but before we go there, are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Madam clerk, please.
We have a recorded vote called. I'll read the motion again. Be it resolved that the committee recommend that council direct staff to add the side row twenty-four microsurfacing project at two hundred and nine thousand to the budget? Uh, Deputy Mayor Dobrine?
Yes.
Counselor Singsores?
Yes.
Mayor Milne?
Yes.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Counselor Shipston?
Yep.
Counselor Rice?
Yes.
Counselor John?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to zero, that's carried.
Excellent, thank you. So, Taylor, if I'm not mistaken, we're at five point two five. Or there, that's cowboy math, but their boats?
Five, three, two.
Five, three, two, it's even better.
You dropped the point, not.
Uh, yeah, Roma Atchison would be disappointed in me, I know. Okay. Uh, any further discussion on what you wanna do? Do you wanna make some more changes or are we satisfied? Not seeing anybody jumping up and down. Madam clerk? Oh, so, so did we need to receive Taylor's report still, yes?
Correct, yeah, move her second to receive if, if we're there.
If we're there. So that's what's left to do on the agenda, unless somebody has any other thoughts. Jim? Do you wanna move receiving of the report? Okay, is there a second here?
I'll second.
Monica, please, thank you. Any further discussion on the report? All those in favor? That is carried. We need to resolve back into council. Someone move that we do that? Jason and second by Martin? Thank you. At seven thirty-five. All those in favor? That is carried. I'm gonna let the clerk, we have three motions to, this is a procedural thing.
Correct. Just give me one sec.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess.
Be great.
Let's, yeah, let's take a five-minute, oh, sure, Jason wants a question first, please.
Yeah, so. So at our final, at the final meeting where we approve it, is that we're not making no adjustments to this the last or can we?
We can, we can, we can make changes right up till the.
I thought, so I just saw something little pops up.
Oh, absolutely, sure. It would be better if it was done tonight, but if something comes up, we can absolutely do that for sure. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. It is seven thirty-six. We'll come back at seven forty-five. Joan and Monica, thank you very much. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your efforts.